All right. Welcome, everybody, to the October 15th, 2024 meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forums are located at the back of the chambers. The Commissioner, Commissioner utilize the speaker request forums. If you'd like to speak on any item, please complete the speaker request form located in the bookshelves in the back of the chambers and return it to Commissioner Manager Holly Hennies located at the lower right side of the dais. This meeting will call the meeting to order, and I'd ask Commissioner Drews to do the moment silence reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next on our agenda is review and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Roskneck, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, and I'll recognize Commissioner Manager Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for today contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 1st, 2024. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $3,755,364.12. Item C is to cancel the outstanding checks as presented and remit $18,933.34 to the Office of the State Treasurer as required by S D C L Chapter 43-41B-20. Item D is to approve the abatement applications for tax year 2023 for American Towers. Parcels 73204, 73232, 73207, 73229, 73213, 73212, 73201, 73360, 73144, and 73265 totaling Item E is approval of the fourth quarter local emergency management program grant. Item F is approval of the 2025 joint funding agreement with the U.S. Geological Survey in Pennington County for the Met Warren system. Item G is to declare a surplus for the purpose of sale at an online auction. One 1977 federal 1,008 T Thunderbolt Siren Blower and Horn Assembly, asset number 000152. Item H is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of September 2024. And finally, item I is to authorize one Glock 19, serial number BCHV828, to be declared a surplus for the purpose of commendation.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, at this time, is there any Commissioners who wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda for discussion? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion from the Commission.
A move.
Moved by Drews to approve the agenda, consent agenda, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nexus brings us to item number six from the City of Rapid City, and I'll recognize Dan. Ansley?
Yes. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank you for considering this item once again. What the City of Rapid City is asking is that the Commission would direct your staff to prepare a resolution for your next Commission meeting that would establish a consolidated Board of Equalization. In your packet, there's a letter from the City as well as a letter from your Equalization Office. We understand that in doing so, there in establishing a consolidated board, there are some questions about some additional workload that would be required of your staff. The City is offering to provide as much assistance as possible to relieve some of that burden. But overall, what we are requesting is to allow as much expediency for the taxpayers as possible and also to hopefully relieve some of their concerns with the tightened timeframe that's required by state statute, as well as to have a more consolidated process so that it's a streamlined process for the taxpayers. Because unfortunately, the state statute offers very little opportunity for taxpayers to be able to go through this process. And so this is the only other way that is authorized by the state to hopefully expedite the process. We have spoken with Aberdeen in Brown County about their consolidated board that they've been using for several years now. It has worked fairly well. We understand that there is some concern that in having a consolidated board that it may encourage or incentivize taxpayers to delay their filing of the appeal. Again, the City is offering to provide as much assistance as possible to your staff in scheduling those appeals and everything else. But ultimately, what we've requested is a two-year commitment so that we can try it for a couple of years to see ultimately how it would work, to see if there are some efficiencies that we can gain as well as lessons so that the second year will be as smooth as possible. And then frankly, if it doesn't work, then we can explain to the taxpayers that we have tried, but ultimately it doesn't work. However, if it does work in Brown County, we do believe that we can make it work here in Pennington County. But with that, I don't want to delay your meeting anymore.
Thanks, Dan. I will give a little background on this. You came forward a couple of meetings ago, and we formed a group with a couple Commissioners to sit down with you and staff to kind of work through some, have some discussions. And so I'm going to refer to the Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskneck.
So Daniel, one of Shannon's concerns is that he doesn't have the staff. And the staff that he does have, that they could literally be overworked. And if they're overworked, then they're not being effective to the taxpayer. And so with that being said, I asked him, what would it, could you just give me a rough estimate what it would cost to hire some temporary staff? Well, unfortunately, these appraisers, they have to be pretty educated before they can get up there and work with the public and make a recommendation to lower. Or anyhow, with that being said, he couldn't really give me a number. And I was wondering if there's an alternative, because it's my understanding at these Rapid City meetings that there's no presence of the county from the assessor's office nor the Commission. Would it be possible to try that before we make a resolution where we get the assessor's office more involved on the city level and maybe a Commissioner or two, just so that there is a voice from the Commission at those Rapid City meetings?
Go ahead.
Thank you. That is a great question. We would be very open to have, to have county staff be at the existing meetings that are there. From my understanding, that was the previous practice several years ago. With that being said, though, I think it doesn't resolve the streamlining issue where residents end up appearing to two different boards and also the very small window of opportunity that taxpayers have to make that appeal. We, when you look at the number of appeals that are made, the vast majority of appeals that are made to the local board are not actually made in person. There are also, it's when there are stipulations that have already been made between the existing county staff as well as the property, the property owner as well. And so there's not that many meetings that are usually done, and of those, the vast majority end up appealing to the county board as well. And so while there will be some additional appeals that would be made to the consolidated board, there would not be a significant increase in the total number, at least that hasn't been the past history. And so really, what our contention is, the only additional workload that would come from would be if during that additional two or three-week period that there's more appeals that are made than what are customarily made.
And my only concern is that in two weeks, we have to put together a resolution that could really change the landscape of how we do things. And I think the overall idea is good, but I don't know if two weeks is going to be enough time to really dive into this and put a resolution together that's going to really work out for the county and the city. But other than that, I agree. I'm all about making it easier for the taxpayer.
Dan.
Yes. For me, I like the idea. I don't think because you have more staff and they have to do more work, so do we as Commissioners. I mean, and it's not about us. It's about streamlining the process for the taxpayers. So in order to do that, we need to find a solution for that that works for both sides. To me, I was only, I was in the meeting, and then we had kind of a discussion afterwards with me and a city councilperson and you as well, Mr. Ansley, and your lawyer. So I'll be up straight in that. I didn't feel that this was a bad idea. And why I say that again is because you ended up also saying, we will help. This isn't about the county doing all the work. So if it was about the county doing all the work and that process was going to be a lot more, it'd be different. The staff coming to the city is just as much time as the staff staying here at the county. And two Commissioners going over there is doing the same thing we should do here in the first place. I think it's a positive for the taxpayers, streamlining the process. I'm with the city on this, that anything we can do, this is about property taxes, a huge issue that has been in Pennington County and the state for a long time. And anything we can make the taxpayers feel more comfortable that our process and how we're doing things and how we do our taxes here at Pennington County and how our Equalization Office does that process is only going to help us for Pennington County. So for me, the resolution could be simple, and the details can be worked out. Because if, like I said, if that process isn't all worked out by then, we're not going to be able to do it, you know what I mean, this year anyway. But the resolution gives us time to think, maybe we could do some meandering to the point where the staff on our side doesn't feel overworked and yours feels more into the process, I think it's a positive for Pennington County.
Thanks, Deb. Any other comments before I make comment? Mr. Drews.
So, Mr. Ansley, I was on the other side where we did a consolidated board in a much smaller market than this, in a county of about 20,000, which was, we had a couple of small communities in the county, and it worked fairly well. The biggest issue that I had with it is that there was a certain number from the school board that was supposed to be in attendance, a certain number from the county in attendance, a certain number from the city that was supposed to be participating. But what happened on it is that it ended up being a rotation. So you ended up with a different school board. If you had multiple days, you ended up usually with different school board members at each meeting. So you had to go back and review what had taken place previously or the discussion. Same way with the city, it was different members that were showing up. So, so I would just encourage that. I mean, it'd be if the board is selecting like three members from the county commission, that it be the same three members at each, at each meeting. Same thing with the school board, et cetera, that it be that way. I can't say that I actually support this at this point in time. You know, I read Shannon's email to us, and I know that it puts their staff in a time crunch, a real time crunch. And for the, for the taxpayer, it's probably a great thing. I'm not sure it can be accommodated as proposed at this point in time. So that's where I'm at.
Mr. Laster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought about this too. I think it would be great if we could figure out a way to how we could streamline it so that, because out of everything that I've read and listened to on this, if they go to this consolidated board and they still want to appeal, then they're going to appeal and come straight back to the Board of Commission. Is that, do I understand that correct? So we're not saving us time. We're not, you know, we're not saving Shannon's team time because they're still having to do all that extra presentation and meet earlier deadlines. But I guess, how do you make it easier and more streamlined for the citizens to, because if they're not showing up to the town meeting, and then they're just kicking it to the Board of Commission for their appeal, I guess I don't see how it saves anybody any time, either way.
I'm going to recognize Shannon.
Amy wants to answer Travis.
Yeah.
Oh, Dan, I didn't see that. Go ahead.
Sure. I think that's a great question. If there is a consolidated board, they would not be able to appeal to the county as well. Their only appeal would be to the state, to peer, or to circuit court. And so it's kind of a one-and-done type process.
Mr. Chair, to follow up with that, if you don't mind. But could they still refuse to go to the consolidated board and just do the Rapid City Board and then, oh, so if the consolidated board is there, it's just the consolidated board? Okay, I just.
Shannon.
Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. I'd like to address the comments made about my staff being overworked. In the email I sent you, I described the situation where we moved that deadline to appeal up a couple of weeks. And that is going to move the majority of the appeals that we deal with from March into April. My staff works with a lot of property owners as soon as we mail assessment notices, all the way through the local board and the county board process. This shifts that two-month period of time into one month. It's not that my staff will be overworked. My staff will not have the time to meet with a property owner, to look at a property, or maybe not even talk to a property owner about their appeal. So you will be hearing appeals on properties that we haven't seen and haven't talked to the property owner about. We don't know anything about it. We will have no recommendation because we don't know anything about it. We will not have the time. It's not that they will just be overworked. There ain't enough people to deal with that amount of appeals.
Thanks, Shannon.
Chair.
I wanted to make a comment before I go back to second one. Thanks, Shannon. My thought process on this is, I think I kind of agree with most of the Commission. I think consolidation's great. I think me and Deb have both been on both sides of this with the city and county equalization part of it. And it's tough on the city's part, and I know it's challenging to get the councilpeople to the meetings and set it all up. And I, one of my concerns was just what Gary had mentioned was, you know, if you put somebody on a board, it'd be the same people, not just a rotating one, because it's tough. Same with the schools. I do like the streamlining part of it. From my understanding, you know, trying to rush through this and trying to get it done next year, I think is a bit of a push because I think there's still some more things that need to be worked out. But I think there's support for it, but I think we need details, and I don't want to have to rush into something. And then, you know, we say we can work them out, but it creates some problems for the citizens themselves, just as Shannon said. All of a sudden, you can't go out and reassess the properties that the people are appealing. That's my only concern, is it being too quick. I think it's, the discussions are great. I think we started them. I think some more discussions would be had, and it sounds to me like the Commission's open to it. But to try and rush it in for next years, because already we've got, I've already heard comments from other areas that want to jump in, but we haven't even had those discussions. You know, Hill City, Box Elder, Wall, you know, you're talking just a little bit more. My other concern was, and I'm thankful that you guys stepped up, is that there is a cost, and you guys have volunteered to help with that. So I, you know, I thank you for that because there is a cost, and I think we can find some solutions here. Ms. Hancock.
Thank you, Chair. So why is their time, the city, their Commissioners or their, their council, their staff, any different wasting their time with no process than ours? At least they, that the streamlining gives the taxpayers the same process as you would here. So to me, no staff showing up, their staff showing up, their people showing up, and nobody there to explain to the taxpayers basically the process. So we're saying, Shannon's saying the same thing that Dan is, that Dan's not saying, trying to be nice about it, but he's saying the taxpayers are coming here and they have to come to you anyway. And there's no one here, there used to be, but there's no one here to explain it to them. And then I remember when we were there, I'll tell you without being, trying to be mean, I really didn't learn anything about the process until I got to the county. Because we didn't have the same process in order to learn about it. And maybe I'm wrong, maybe you learned better, Commissioner LaCroy, but I did not. So to be fair, the streamline is about the taxpayers knowing about how property taxes work, and it's about them appealing because they're dissatisfied with their property tax. So it's not about all the other stuff. That's your bottom line. How do you get that done in a positive way that doesn't make this staff at the city waste their time or our staff be overburdened? So I understand there's still process that needs to be worked out, and I think that's a positive way, and we're starting forward. But just remember, there's two sides that are having the same issue. And this side on the city is willing to give their time and energy to make the other side's process a lot easier. And to streamline, just to make it easier on our staff, I think the city and the county working together will make this appeal system pretty awesome for the taxpayer. They'll feel like they were basically taken care of. And the bottom line is, it is done, like you just learned, Commissioner Lassiter, it is done. The appeals from the city will not come to us because then they have to go to the state. And in that process, they need to know the full process, not just, our staff is overburdened or, okay, sorry, Shannon, I said the word, I heard it once. Our staff, we need to do something so our staff is not overburdened, but still can do the process with the city, and we make a difference for our people that actually pay our salaries, so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
I just have a question, and maybe it, just for clarification purposes. Do we not send anybody to the city appeals at all so that there's any kind of communication? There's no kind of briefing that kind of says, hey, we've seen this property, we haven't seen this property? Either one of you.
Shannon.
We, my staff doesn't show up at the local Board of Equalization in the same way we do county Board of Equalization. We, we don't have enough time. But we still meet with every property owner. We talk to every property owner, and we go out and look at every property that we can in, in that timeframe. And if we find a recommendation to change the assessment, we provide it to the city. So they have that. Of course, we tell the property owner as well. Property owner can decide if he wants to show up to the, to the meeting or not. If we think that the assessment is valid and there's no reason to change, we send the same recommendation to the city. What Mr. Ansley has said, most of the appeals are handled that way. There's only a small number, a relatively small number that show up in person. The same as the county Board of Equalization, there are hundreds of appeals, but you only have a hundred, I'm guessing at the numbers, that show up in person. It's the same way at the local Board of Equalization. We, we still meet with the property owners, and we look at the property, and we make a recommendation to the city.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Shannon, one of your concerns was the commercial properties and what they might do if we go with this route.
The commercial properties, especially the, those properties represented by a tax rep who makes a commission off of the appeal. Those guys tend to wait till the night before, literally the last minute to file an appeal. So if there's a, if there's a deadline in March, they wait till the, to the deadline in March, and then we know about that. And we have another month to deal with it. All of those properties will now wait till the deadline in April, and there is no other opportunity after that. We don't want to go to peer and, or court and deal with those situations. And we, we simply won't have enough time.
You know, I think we all agree that streamlining the process is the way to go. My concern is that are we really doing the taxpayers justice? If we sit there and we hear a property come in front of us and there's no recommendation from your office, and then where are we at? We're just going, it's a crap shoot because what do we do?
Absolutely.
That's my concern.
Where one of, my appraisers hasn't been out to look at it to see if there's something that we don't know about, or to talk to the property owner. That will definitely happen. We will not have time.
Because when it comes to us now, it's been vetted, there's a recommendation, and there's a lot of support to support your decision. And to have a property come in front of us without any recommendation, I just, I feel that's not really just, justice to the taxpayer. I mean, that's, I like the process, I just think we need to look at it a little bit harder.
I would.
Chair, one more thing.
Ms. Hancock.
So I respect what you're saying, Ron, but that happens all the time at our Equalization Board as a Commission, let alone if it happened at the city. So we change some of that, or we don't change some of that, or Commissioners make recommendations. Since I was at the city to hear, the only thing that I saw different was the process in which the city learned about how to do property taxes and how we come up with the process in the long run. That's where I think we're missing since I've been from city to county. And I was six years at city and about 10 years at county. So that's what I'm saying. I see the process no different. And Shannon used to come there, and Shannon is a good representative for our, our equalization. And some people just, you know, just passed it through and said whatever, because the process also shows that when you're a city councilperson, you just lower it because, you know, it's the nice thing to do, right? And then it comes to us, and the city recommendation is always lower. I don't, I don't ever see them higher. Because they don't know the process, so they're just, you know, you got to have an explanation of when you lower those, that process, you're costing taxpayers, the other taxpayers the money to suck up whatever you just lowered. A lot of that stuff, I can say, most people didn't know at the city at the time. So I'm saying, for the benefit of Commissioners, for the benefit of the process, and the streamlining of the taxpayers, it can be a win-win situation. How that works out at this time, with our staff and their staff both putting in their time in order to make this happen, I don't think in that case, Shannon, I believe, just from listening to Mr. Ansley and their team, they're willing to help whatever they need to do. They can't do an appraisal, but they also can help in the process of anything to do with that, that you guys have to do before to save you time. So again, I don't see any different except the, the information you learn as a city councilperson, and then making the process come here anyway because they're just going to lower them all. So you're not really having a win-win situation with the city not knowing how county process is and how that works. And working out with the staff would be a lot easier so they're not having to do certain work. And other work, I'm sorry, you're just going to have to add that to it. That's what we do. I mean, I do that in my business, I do that as a Commissioner. Some things I just have to do because it's for saving the taxpayer, the people that pay my salary is job. So I do it. So, thank you.
I, I will chime in a little bit on, from being on the City Council's Equalization too. It was tough because we didn't have, you know, as a city councilperson, you don't have the, the information or the education, as what I've learned from being on the county commission Board of Equalization for the last eight years. I mean, you guys done an excellent job of training us and teaching us what's going on. I do have concerns over that timeframe of working through with citizens that have legitimate with citizens that have legitimate concerns because we often do, did, do do that in between. As you said, you find, you meet with them, you go through it, and you actually have some lower recommendations, and so they cancel their appeals. That step becomes kind of going away when you shorten that timeframe. I think you guys do awesome work in dealing with them. I think, from my talking to people so far, absolutely, I'd love to do a streamlining process because it would be better for the citizens, but I also see that there's some very difficult things to work out. And I think we need more time to go through those details and to understand them all fully before we try to change something. You know, that's my concern. I think this is a great step. I think, from what I hear from this commission, they like it. I think we just need to get, have some more meetings to break down the details, to make it to where it works better.
Chair.
That's my thoughts on this. I think, Dan, you're absolutely right. You've got city council bringing people without educating, it's tough for you guys, I understand that. And I've talked to the mayor, and it is a tough situation for the process. But we do want to do something for the citizens to lighten that steps, but I think there's also some barriers that we need to work through before throwing that in. Before I go to you for a fourth time, I want to.
No, it's just for a motion, or to try to figure out a motion, sir, not to speak on the issue.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry. So, I think we need more meetings, if we could, to figure out some of this and not deny or approve at this time, but just keep working on it. There's a couple of things we need to work out. So, I don't think we really, if we don't have to make a motion, that we could just have Jones set up some more meetings? Or, I don't know if that needs to be a motion, or we just know with Mr. Ainsley that we need more meetings?
Mr. Ainsley, are you okay with no action on this?
Mr. Chair.
You done?
Is that what we should put, is no action, or we don't have to say anything?
Well. Don't we have to table it?
No, you'd have to.
You can take it from the table.
Postpone, can't be postponed indefinitely, can it? Okay, until we get a, okay. So, my motion would be postponed indefinitely until we have more meetings.
Second.
Motion is to postpone indefinitely, is it by Hancock, seconded by Laster. Mr. Drews, go.
Question for Shannon. Shannon, when I read your memo, did I understand that there's actually 20, within Pennington County, there's actually 29 boards?
I don't remember, 28 or 29 local Board of Equalization.
Okay. So, I would think that we'd want to find out also, how many of these others want to do something like this? Because, I mean, it'd be easy enough, maybe, to create it with one, but if you're talking about multiples, multiple cities, and I presume townships is what.
The cities, towns, and the rural townships make up that 28 or 29 number.
Okay. So, we should have a better idea of how many want to be a part of a consolidated board, aren't we?
I agree. Ms. Shannon.
A comment to that is, they will not be part of a consolidated board, they would each be a consolidated board.
Consolidated board, yeah.
Any further discussion before we go to motions to postpone indefinitely so that more discussions could be had and bring back when solid solutions presented? Any further discussion? Any further public comment?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
So, I assume Daniel will be working directly with Shannon because I think that's where we need to work out the details relative to Shannon being able to sit there and do his job as a county assessor.
Just more meetings.
I would assume, right now, we got Ms. Hancock and yourself working with Dan and Shannon, having meetings. I would recommend that you two follow up on this and work with the both of them.
Because I can tell you that if Shannon didn't oppose this, I would approve it today. I just, I think we need to work out some details relative to his office.
Yeah, I would suggest the same matter going, and I would direct Mr. Aslan to coordinate those meetings.
And I also agree with Commissioner Drews that there's 28 other consolidated boards out there that we have to find out if they want to be part of this process.
Yeah.
It'll be consolidated.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next, this brings us to public hearing from an all-recognized highway superintendent, Joe Miller. This is for the five-year county transportation plan.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Up in front of you here is a requirement from the South Dakota DOT for, to provide a five-year transportation plan for an applicant, to be able to apply for bridge improvement grants or the big program in January. So, our office has been doing this for, as near as I can tell, for about 10 years or so, we've been putting a plan together even prior to when we were eligible for big funds. With that, before I forget, there's a sign-up sheet over here, so if anybody does wish to speak on the transportation plan, get with Holly and get that sheet signed. With that, I'll start with the road projects. Some of the bigger ones that we've got on our plan are Deadwood Avenue is a safety project that's been in the works for probably seven or eight years. We are in some really good conversations with the last landowner and hope to have that within the next couple of weeks so we can get that project to bid letting for construction in 2025. Reservoir Lamb Road intersection, it's a 90-degree intersection, or a 90-degree four-way intersection that's got a vertical curve to the south of it that doesn't allow the proper sight distance coming up to that curve, and especially at night, you can't see that curve. So, people are traveling at a good rate of speed and they miss the corner. And then along any other road projects, overlays, cracked heels, chipped heels, ongoing, according to what our PCI data shows. With that, I'll stand for any questions for the road projects.
So, any questions for Joe? Is there anybody that signed up for public comment? Go back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion to through the Pennington County Five-Year Transportation Plan 2025-2029. Authorize a chair's signature on the certification form.
Moved by Roskinett.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Drews.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I think there's more to come, though, is there not, Joe?
You are correct.
Okay.
Okay.
If I may continue.
I'll hold off on that motion.
What's that?
I'll hold off.
Okay, if I may continue, that kind of wraps it up for our road projects. We've recently completed Sheridan Lake Road and South Rodford Road will be completed next year. So, those are some of our larger projects that we've been on, been on the books for several years. So, we'll continue to look for other projects and do the ones that we have on the books. Next up, we have bridge projects. Highway 1416, there's a bridge that was built in 1924 just to the west of, or, 151st Street. It's currently load-rated just due to the construction. Back in 1924, they didn't have trucks as heavy as we do now. And with the federal highway administration changing the rules on how they look at bridges, if there's a set of plans available, the engineer has to load-rate it with those set of plans. They can't just use engineering judgment. So, unfortunately, this bridge is actually in good condition. It's not, or it's in fair condition, not good condition, but it's, for 1924, it's in really good condition. But we have to replace it to get the load rating off. There's just nothing else we can do. So, Travis, I know you're very aware of this one. That's on the books for next year. Plans are ready to go, we just got to get it to bid letting. Thunderhead Falls is another one. This is a federal bridge project that would, will leave one other bridge on Thunderhead Falls, which is a one-way in, one-way out. One other bridge on that route that is load-rated. Hammer Quest Road, east of Rapid City here, is a federal, also a federal bridge project that's set for construction in 2025. And some other ones that I want to point out that we're looking at trying some new technologies, some different stuff. Country Road, we're currently being designed to have tub girders. From my understanding, tub girders have never been installed in the state of South Dakota, they're used other places. But currently, we have that one in design to be hopefully constructed in 2027.
Please explain what that is.
What's that?
Please explain what that is.
So, it's, everybody's kind of familiar with our double T bridges that we've, you know, Pennington County has a lot of them, and we had a lot of bridges replaced with double Ts in 1972 after the flood just because they were easy and went together fast, and they could replace a lot of bridges for not a lot of money. So, these are kind of the same lines, except it's a steel, piece of steel that's pressed into a tub girder, basically, and then they'll pour a concrete deck on top of it. So, they go together like puzzle pieces or Lincoln Logs, just like our double Ts do. It's just a little bit more updated technology, and they go together quicker and faster than a continuous concrete bridge that we've been doing here the last couple of years.
Thank you, Joe.
And then True North Modular Steel Constructed Bridge, Construction Bridges, we're gonna try one of those here on Trask and 159th here in the next couple of years. That's a bridge that you can just order from True North out of Huron, and it comes together in pieces. And we put it together like an erector set, and away you go. So, those are some other things that are coming down the pike. And current bridge status of 2024, at the end of 2024, we have 10 bridges in poor condition. When I started six years ago, that number was, I believe, 23. So, we've come a long ways in six years. We still have 45, or 14 bridges that are 45 to 50 years old and 76 that are 50-plus years old. We have 47 that are in good condition, 70 that are in fair condition, and 10 that are in poor condition. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions for Joe?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So, Joe, explain to me on the Bogus Jim Road. I understand the base stabilization, I think, but behind it, it says cement.
So, that's something we haven't done in Pennington County either. I've done it on a solar project over in Minnesota. Basically, since we've got the cement plant right here, we take powdered cement, and much like we've been doing with our Base 1 stabilization here the last couple of years with the liquid, you can inject that or lay that cement onto the road and grind it into the road and pretty much have a concrete road after you're done.
Yeah, interesting.
We also learned some of that technique in, at NACE down in Palm Springs this last year. There's a county down in Georgia, down in the southeast somewhere, Alabama, I believe, there you go, doing this on their own. So, we have a grinding machine as well. So, it's something that we're kind of tossing around, the idea of maybe doing it ourselves as well.
Thank you.
We do have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next, that brings us up to the Pink County Jail Tower Project, and I'll recognize Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds, and Sheriff Brian Mueller.
Good morning. How are we doing today? As Davis pulls this up, I'm pretty excited to be in front of you today to talk through some options on this jail expansion. All of you have been very involved over the last several years. You know, I tell you, we've probably been working on this, a variation of this project for about 10 years now, since Sheriff Tome was in office, and definitely the last year and a half since I've been in office. And it's a very complex process, as you're gonna see here pretty soon. And, but I'm very excited with the partners that we have on board, putting the pieces of this puzzle together. We're gonna, we're gonna give a lot of information to all of you today, and we've been living it for the last year, year and a half here, some of, working towards what these different options are, what the costs are, the operational considerations with that. But we're gonna provide a lot of information to you today. So, at the end of this, we're gonna ask you to either consider having a special meeting in the near future so we can get more in-depth with some more details on these options, answer other questions that you might have, and also bring Tom Grimmond in to talk through potential financing options for the county as it pertains to these different options. So, with that, I'll let Davis kick us off.
Yeah. Again, Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds for Pennington County. So, here we are, the Jail Tower Project update, building a stronger and safer community. Obviously, Sheriff Mueller's to my right. And here's some of the topics we're gonna present today. We do have a slide on population data, but the main things we have are the current and projected needs for inmate housing. We're also gonna have the jail data trends, progress on the design phase, and the projected construction costs for different options that we're gonna provide, so. This shows here, this is from Elevate Rapid City. This is a population projection from, straight from them. If we want to focus in here on 2020 through 2024, we have a 1.47% increase across Pennington County. And if you look up here, the national rate is actually about half a percent. So, we're almost triple the national rate as far as population growth. And when I did talk to Garth from Elevate, he also mentioned that we are a little bit higher than what we're seeing here. And also, the projected annual growth is higher than 1% as well. And then, obviously, another population factor to consider is the additional 4,000 people that will be moving into Ellsworth Air Force Base in 2025 through 2030.
I'm gonna ask Davis to, oh, he got it up already.
Yeah.
All right, great. As you remember, back in the late teens, we built the kitchen and laundry expansion, and we sized that for this future growth. So, it's sized for up to 1,200 to house and do laundry for up to 1,200 people. So, we've taken care of some of those costs on the front end. But when they were going through the process with Venture, as you remember, we had about $28 million worth of infrastructure issues that we have not yet resolved over at the jail. So, we're kind of a little bit of a ticking time bomb with some of the infrastructure, the plumbing, some of the HVAC, electrical, some of our security electronics that are over at the jail that are aging in the facility. And so, part of the complexity and part of the costs that you're gonna see on these options are, as each piece of this that we touch through this construction process, we're gonna have to go in and also include, or improve those infrastructure issues as we go. We can't ignore that because if we get a major issue right now as we're running full capacity, we're gonna be shipping inmates off to other areas, and then we're gonna see our costs really start to explode on trying to do some of these, some of this project in an emergency situation versus planning it out like we're gonna present you the options today. And you can see the 2021 costs that Venture had figured in at about almost $29 million. And then across the bottom of that slide just shows what the inflation numbers have been the last few years since then. So, that number today would be, you know, pushing $37 million just for the infrastructure that didn't add any capacity. And we'll get into the growth of the jail here next. And there's a lot of different factors that go into county jail populations. Depending on what's going on in the country, people will, you know, can pick different pieces of this out. And this is not all-inclusive, but this is just a general list of things that impact the numbers that we have in the jail. Obviously, law enforcement calls for service and proactivity, the state's attorney's office philosophy, public defender's philosophy, case processing that determines the length of time somebody stays in jail from start to finish during their process if they don't bond out, the bond structure that's adopted by the local courts. We've had a lot of discussions on that over the last couple of years. Legislature and legislation has a big impact on county jail populations as we saw with Senate Bill 70 a few years back, how it took some of the prison population and put that on local jails. Diversion, some of our diversion programs that the state's attorney's office has initiated, and then also some of this ignite stuff that we're doing more recently. So, we're doing a lot of things on the back end to try to reduce some recidivism and make sure that we're housing the right people in the jail. make sure that we're housing the right people in the jail. So that's going on. Uh, citizen and community input. So obviously, as elected officials, all of you and myself, uh, the state's attorney, spent a lot of time talking to the public, uh, and, and listening to what, what they want. And, um, so that, that does have an impact on, on the jail population also. Budgets, a couple of things I didn't put on the list, obviously, uh, the jail population, the number of beds that you have also have an impact. And then the relief valve that I have as sheriff on, on the jail population is how we handle our contracts, our contracts with the US Marshal and other counties that we contract with. This is just, we've got just a few slides that BKB Group, uh, presented to us during our needs assessment. Uh, this first one talks about, uh, the jail admission data with the, with the projections just showing that, that they were initially projecting when they started working on this process that that would continue to increase, and we have seen that. And I'll show you some, some real data, uh, since that time here coming up in the presentation. And then you'll remember this slide from their, uh, needs assessment with the jail capacity. And I want to explain just a few things on here because we're going to have some slides coming up here that have similar information. There's a lot going on, and this is very busy. But this is a quarterly breakdown of the, of the jail population, uh, starting back in 2014 through November of 2021. The top line, the red dotted line on the top is 100% capacity. The 601 beds that we have at the jail, we don't count the booking beds. If you remember, our total capacity in the jail is 624, uh, but we, we do not count the booking bed. So 601 is the, is the maximum capacity at the jail. The green line right under that dotted red line is the operational capacity. And that's figured out about 87% is the number that we've used, that we've been comfortable with. Uh, nationally, a lot of places use 85%, some use 80%. I would tell you, when you get above that 87 to 90%, it causes a lot of operational issues for you in the jail. Uh, we, we have about 25 different, uh, housing segregation units in the jail. When we get to that maximum capacity, uh, it, it really reduces our ability to classify people into the right housing unit, whether they're male, female, uh, minimum, maximum, uh, security inmates, and then a variation in between. A lot of inmates are, uh, special needs, they have to be segregated. Uh, there's, uh, considerations with large cases and segregating, uh, potential witnesses, uh, various suspects that are in on the same case. So there's a lot of housing considerations. When you get above that maximum capacity, uh, it's tough on staff, as we've seen, obviously. And then also, it's very, it's very hard on the facility because when we're running at 100% capacity, we're not able to move inmates out of a housing unit and go in and refurbish that housing unit, whether it's some of these infrastructure issues or just simple things like, you know, buffing the floor and, and repainting becomes very difficult. And you can see historically with this data, the, the line that is, towards the top of that is the Pennington County, it says state ADP, but it's, it's, that's our local Pennington County inmate population. And the bottom one is our federal ADP. And as you can see, the two combined together to give us the blue lines at the top. So you, starting back at 2014, we were up against our operational capacity. And then since about 2016, uh, we've been over that fairly consistently. And in 2016, we were actually over our full capacity. So that causes lots of other internal issues in the jail, uh, happened to triple bunk inmates, um, and those types of things. In this graph, and I'd like to thank, uh, Rhonda Bone from our office helped us put this information together in pretty, pretty short order. There's a lot going on in this graph also, but what I like about it is that this goes back and it shows us the operational capacity and the overall capacity of our jail with each stage when we built the jail annex in 2006. So the 2004 and 5 numbers on there are when we had just the main jail that was built in 1989. And then in 2006, we built the four-floor annex, but we only opened the first floor initially, then we opened the third floor, then we opened the second floor. And that showed, this graph shows what our actual inmate population was doing with each section that we opened in that new jail annex, all the way up until we had the annex fully opened in, uh, 2000 and, uh, into 2009, or 2011, I'm sorry. And that runs us out. Then we did yearly up to 2024, just so you can see what those numbers are. And we stayed, you know, pretty, pretty, uh, over our full capacity since 2017. And we did have a drop-off during COVID, so the other lines that you see on there, the purple line at the top is our Pennington County population, our, the, the, the next line underneath of it is our federal inmate population, and the line at the bottom is our other contracts. And I'd tell you, today we're running just under 600 inmates. We're running about 100 US Marshal inmates, so our act, our numbers at, today is actually lower than the end of that graph. And we're running, today we have eight contracts for other housing, and that's primarily Custer County and Fall River County that we're housing for, for the other contracts. And this slide is super busy, and we'll, we'll do some more work on this, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of an illustration, historically, what, what our numbers are doing. And as we talk through the different options that we're looking at today, you can get an idea as to what the sense of the population in the jail with our growth is doing and where we're going to be with each option. So this will make more sense, and we could come back to it when we get done with the options. But as you can see, our local inmate population, as it continues to grow, my only relief valve is to continue to release US Marshal inmates. So we're going to, we, we will see a continued growth of our local inmate population, and we will correspondingly need to continue to kick US Marshal inmates out and reduce the revenue that we receive from, from that paying source. I just wanted to talk briefly about the, the US Marshal numbers and what that does for us here in Pennington County, because a lot of people are going to look at these options we're going to discuss here in a little bit and tell you that, uh, we might not be able to afford to do that. But I'm going to tell you as the sheriff that I think that we cannot afford to not do this, and we cannot afford to not do this correctly. And, and when you look at this marshal inmate, uh, projection, what we've been doing, you'll see that our numbers peaked in 2021, we were running close to 200 US Marshals. And as our local population, uh, spiked back up after COVID, we've had to continue to reduce the marshal numbers down to where today we're running of 95 Marshals in custody. Each US Marshal inmate, and you see the, the continued decrease in the number of Marshal inmates, but a slight increase in the revenue, which is the orange line on the top of that. And the reason that revenue went back up is we renegotiated our contract last year from $85 a day to $112 a day. So we're one of the highest paid marshal contracts in the country, which has helped us recover some of those costs, but I have had to continue to reduce the numbers. And I'd tell you, three months ago, we were looking at potentially happen to remove another 25 to 30 Marshals from where we are today. Each US Marshal inmate that we removed from custody costs Pennington County about $40,800 annually. Every 50, we have to reduce that number is about $2 million. So you can see from when we were running close to 200, now today, running just under 100, that's about $4 million worth of revenue in three years that we've lost with the, the increase in the local inmate population. So if we continue on this trend within the next five years, I, I, I think we'll be, I, I would never see that we get to zero US Marshals because of the proximity that we have, uh, uh, to our partners and the fact that the federal court is here, but that, that number's going to drastically reduce. And I, I would foresee, if we don't do something and get headed in the right direction here in the next five years, that we're going to be, you know, somewhere between that $2 and $3 million less marshal revenue than what we're getting today.
Brian, I got a question on that. Seeing these numbers, I'm trying to recall back when we first, the county first built the towers. Prior to that, uh, over on La Crosse Street, Detox used to house Bureau prison people and state parolees. That was kind of a kickstart, was that kind of a kickstart of getting the income ready to help pay for the towers way back then? I'm talking, this is probably 20 years ago.
Those were, those were very specialized programs.
Okay.
Um, that didn't really impact the jail numbers.
Okay.
Uh, it was, uh, yeah, it was a program that, that, uh, in about 2011, we decided to no longer house here. We were one of the only ones in the country that was doing it. It wasn't having very good success.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Brian, so the income that we generate from the marshal, uh, inmates, that income goes directly to cover the operating expenses of the jail itself?
That's factored into the, the, my overall budget that I present to you, and then with the tax support difference, yes.
Chair.
Ms. Haka.
So I like the chart. I like the details. You guys know that by now. Um, what I'm seeing is from 2004 to about '24 is about a hundred dollar in, or 100, 100, uh, person increase over those years, between five years, like 2000.
Did you mean 2014? Were you talking 2014?
Nope, because 2004 to 2011, it's about a seven-year increase up to 2012, meaning of, uh, inmates. Then you go from 2012 to 2017, you're, because you're about 300, 400 average for inmates in 2004 to 2011. Am I correct, Mr. Purcell? And then 2012 to 2017, you're about, you've increased about another 100. Then in 2017 to 2024, you're another average of about 100 increase. That's with Marshals.
That's with Marshals.
Okay. Well, I'm saying that, I'm just saying, thinking as a business, I'm not trying to say anything bad.
Yep.
Is that when you have 100, from 2024, or 2004 to 2024, your average is about 100 every five to seven years. That is an increase. But you're wanting, so that's about a 20-year, right?
Right.
That you've increased, it took you 20 years to get that far, not that, and, and remember, we have programs, we have all kinds of things going on, and we're still having those averages. So it tells me that you're probably going to stay in the next five to seven years, probably have a 100 increase. If you increase 4,000 people, that doesn't mean you increase our population, especially through the base. I don't think that average is going to go too much. And your, and your first option was like 148. I don't know, I have to look, does, is it going to last? And that's, that would be my question, is 148 beds, is it going to last 20 years? Is it going to last 10 years from, and I'm not saying you're supposed to know that. It's when I'm doing a business and I'm trying to spend money for my business, how far out do I have to plan and how much money do I have to plan for that? And am I making that plan so I can increase for the future on my business? Meaning, um, can we make another floor that we can't finish, but we can actually have that built because, you know, it's going to be worse to try to build that third floor or second floor? You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
Because my, when I do my motels or whatever, we have shell still, you know, because we have cash flow until we get that other cash flow. But I wanted to plan ahead because, you know, right now I can't afford another million put into it, but I can get that shell ready and do those in pieces and parts.
Right.
So why I'm saying that is when you do a building in a jail, is there areas that you can do that at, still be efficient and effective, do what you need to do, um, make it, you know, shell-ready to a certain extent? Infrastructure is a given, you have to do that, you said that already. But some of those shells that right now you can't just put out, you know, 50 extra million, you could put out 30 million and then put another extra 10, um, to make that shell for the next step if we increase another 50 or 100 beds in the next five years.
That's a, that's a perfect lead-in to what we're about to do here.
Okay.
And when you look at this, when you look at this chart here, the, this is, if we decide, if we decide to pull the trigger today, and, uh, Andy Skull from Skull Construction can get up and talk about this in a little bit, too, you know, we're going to be three to four years out before we're operational. When you look at this, this will tell you in three to four years out, with option A, and we'll get into this in a little bit, adding 148 beds, we're going to be full. By the time we open it back up, we're going to be.
Right.
That 148 beds is what we're going to need at that point, and we're going to be full. So in between now and then, if we don't work on some additional programming and work together very closely, we could be full with no marshal inmates. So, uh, if, if we, if we choose option A, which is the least expensive option, obviously, we'll get into that in a minute, what I would tell you is, we're going to be, we're going to be, the day we open the door, we're going to need to be working on at least option B. Uh, and we're going to be $4 million short marshal revenue, uh, plus trying to make up whatever the difference is in the middle of the fact that we bonded, uh, for a 30-year bond potentially. And we're five years in, and we have to turn around and do another one on top of it. So as, as we work through the options, you'll see that. But I 100% agree with what you're saying is, uh, when we, when we look at these options, trying to figure out, you know, what, what, what do we think we can do? What decision do we think we can make here in the next reasonable amount of time to get this moving forward, so we don't run into that problem?
So Chair, follow-up. So I think we're on the same page, because I'm, I've never looked at the, I'm, I'm not going the cheap end in anything I do either, because infrastructure and buildings, if you go cheap, later on, you're going to pay for that cheap, or you're not going to have enough infrastructure because you did, you decided, well, I only could spend 20,000 now instead of 30,000. Well, you're going to have to go back either way for infrastructure to do that, and like I said, for the shell. So I think, I think we're talking the same thing. I'm not looking for a cheap option and saying, you guys are overspending, what, what the heck are you doing? I'm saying, I want to know in that process that we're doing the right thing, meaning we have a certain amount of money, but we'd also be dumb if we didn't look to the future to a certain extent. So some of that, uh, makes sense, and, and depending on what those costs are, and will those costs be done in the next five to seven years again? I get that.
And we didn't, uh, the other thing we did, this was just based on historical jail data, so facts. We did not factor any, uh, increase in population into this. So as we, and you're right, it's not one for one.
Yeah.
But, but as we do see this population continue to grow, it will impact the jail, and that's not figured into these graphs.
So can I ask you, Brian, does the city, because they use the Sally Park, they use the stuff, are they willing to, um, put some money towards the jail? Because I think we've had really good partnerships in the past with the city and, uh, asking for help on some of our, and, and remember in 2006, that annex, uh, Lloyd was there, I think, too, where we came and we actually helped them with some of the cash flow for that, because, you know, our city staff, our police department is, is in on the same building.
Yep. And when we get to the end of this, when we talk about next steps, we'll discuss some suggestions on that.
My apologies for that. I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, so the public hasn't seen a lot of that stuff we're talking.
I didn't bring the whole packet, so I apologize, I just.
That's okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Nope, we're going to get there here in the next slide.
Thank you.
Next couple of slides.
So this, this is, we'll go through these pretty quickly because we've discussed it, but this is just the factual data on the yearly intakes, as you see they continue to, to increase. And then again, the length of stay, um, has probably a bigger impact on the jail than, than the number of arrests that we're making. So the number of arrests and intakes are increasing, but the length of stay is also increasing. So the time it takes somebody, uh, upon initial arrest until their case is disposed of completely, um, it has continued to increase, and that's been having a pretty big impact on our jail population.
Okay, here we go. We'll start, I, I wanted to start off and kind of, um, just give you a picture of the design team, and this is by no means an advertisement. It's more or less to give you guys an idea of how complex and, and how serious we are taking this project. Um, so kind of in a standard, um, design team, this is kind of what it looks like. You have your architect, your mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers, structural engineers, civil engineers. Usually ends there. Um, but what we did, uh, in this process is, uh, we hired Skull as construction manager at risk. Um, what they can do, um, as you can see in that definition there, they're engaged very early on in the design phase. Um, they provide market value costs on, on what we're seeing here in Rapid City, um, to give us these options that I'm going to show you here in a bit. Um, and they also understand the constructability and the site restraints and things like that that we're, that we're working with on this specific site. Uh, we have our design assist partners, which is Action Mechanical. Um, they are the plumbing and mechanical design assist partners. So what they do is they meet with Skyline Engineering and with us, the owner, to go over specifics and actually talk about, um, the equipment that we would use in the buildings. Um, and, and obviously, they, they help identify and resolve any potential challenges throughout the project by doing that, and same with Muth Electric. Um, we also have, uh, CML and EEA, uh, they are our security electronics and detention equipment, um, design assist partners. They are our security electronics and detention equipment design assist partners. That's pretty self-explanatory. We do have some security electronic concerns in our existing jail and jail annex that we are hoping to resolve as part of this construction project. And then a commissioning agent, this one's a little unique. I personally have not used a commissioning agent in the past, but this, what they do is, they basically verify all the systems that are put into the jail, and they make sure they're working and they're functional, and then I underline the post-occupancy part of it. They also come in afterwards and make sure the owner is comfortable with how everything is set up and making sure everything is running smoothly. So here we are to the jail options. I did an aerial view here, just to give you an under, just to give everyone an understanding of, of the site that we're looking at, building the new proposed jail tower. You can see the original jail there to the left, the jail annex just underneath it, and then the parking structure to the right, and then St. Joseph Street is obviously at the top of the aerial view. So you can kind of see how the, the site is a difficult one to construct anything, especially with some of the options that we're going to show you here. But again, for operational purposes, this is the best place to put the new jail. So what we did here is we added the renderings from BKV to kind of show what each option will look like. So you can see this is option A. Another view, looking east. And we will get into the actual option itself and the construction cost. So what we have here, I tried to highlight each area and then give you a definition of what it is. So, down here at the bottom, we have the 148-bed housing floor. Number two is, this is the mechanical, electrical and security floor, the MEP floor. We're calling it the mezzanine. This is where all the equipment, basically the energy plant, would be housed to operate the jail. And then you have, this here is the vehicle Sally Port. And so obviously, you come in here and then you're able to exit right back out onto St. Joe. Then we also have the, in every option, as the sheriff had talked about earlier, the infrastructure fixes in the original jail, the plumbing, some other light electrical things, will all be completed in whatever, in these base costs for every option. Four is included, so we are making sure to fix those issues at the, at the existing original jail. So you can see the total base cost there just for this option is 65 million. This cost or price per bed is not based, I did not add the design and A and E fees into this. I just add the constructability cost of, of those options, and I'll go over that at a, at a further slide. But again, this number is substantial at the beginning here because of the amount of infrastructure we have to place in this area to be able to hopefully in the end, build more levels on top of it and add more beds in the future. So this cost is substantial, and as you see, you're going to see this price per bed cost go down significantly as we work through this.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Raskin.
Before we go any further, you might explain that the square footage that we're talking about, I know you got a price per bed, but the square footage, if I understand, that that main level is about 20,000. And then that mezzanine area should be another 20,000, so about 40,000 square feet of.
Correct. It's a little bit bigger. I would say, I believe the vehicle Sally Port is about 3,500, 4,000 square feet. So I have the total square footage here. We're, we're looking at about 23,000 square feet or so per floor in the, in the new jail.
Counting the, okay.
Yep, yep. One thing I do want to mention, too, I, I don't know if this, this might actually be a little more, but this is a 26-month timeframe. It's probably more like 26 to 32-month construction timeframe just for this here. So these are the alternates. What I wanted to show here is these other projects that, that need addressed, along with any option we choose. So I know I just showed you the base option, base option, sorry, with all four of these included, but if we are to do anything as far as building a new jail tower, alternate one and two are most likely going to be needed regardless on what option we do. So alternate one is the existing jail and jail annex, security electronic upgrade. Like I said, we have some infrastructure there with the security electronics that needs addressed, and we want to be able to make the original jail, the jail annex, and the new jail tower all be on one security electronic system. Otherwise, operationally, it's, it's, it's just a headache. Alternate two, we have the lower-level main jail remodeling, so that's down here for intake center and healthcare. If you want me to go into this further, I can. There's a lot that's happening. There's a whole booking renovation going on down in that area, because if we're to add this Sally Port here for operational purposes, this floor has to get renovated. So when you look at this, it is an alternate, but if you were to ask me, it would, it would have to be included in any option, otherwise this Sally Port doesn't function correctly. Option B, we'll give you some more views here. You can see, we now have two built-out floors with the mezzanine level. So option B, what does it include? Well, includes everything that the option A included, taken out alternates for now, but what it does do is add 148 more beds. So again, if you look at this base cost here, and the reason I have this is the price per bed based off of this number, it's a little bit less, because like I said, it did not add the design and A and E fees into here, but it's fairly close. But what this shows you is just how much infrastructure is needed, again, to build the initial building. You know, we have a water table underneath this area. The soil is poor. It needs a lot of foundation there to support what we're trying to do. But you can see how significant, or how, how, how much that number came down for the price per bed. And then we'll go to alternates again. This is the total base cost with alternates. Again, if we're to do any of this, alternates one and two need to be done. So option C. As you can see, it's a pretty big building. Each floor, I believe, is roughly 25 feet, 25 feet tall. So at the end of the day, we're, we're pushing 125 feet. Go down each option here, for each view. So again, everything that's included in option B and C, base options with a new, this is shelled out, third and fourth housing floors, excuse me. So there are no beds in here. This is just a shell of two floors. And the reason we wanted to provide you with this option is this gives us room to expand, and if we come back and do this later, you'll see some of these costs in a future slide. But if we were to come back and just build, you know, put a roof right here on top of option B, and to tear that off and do these in the future would be a significant increase in costs. As we can see, the, the inflationary costs with construction seem to be going up every year. But again, total base cost for that option is 109 million. Price per bed is 349, because it went up from the last option, because we're not actually adding beds. We're shelling in the building for future growth. And then, there's a lot of alternates here. Alternate one and two, again, necessary. Alternate three and four, this is to finish level three housing. So that's to finish right here, A3, and A4 is to finish, meaning we're adding, I should have put that in there, but we would be adding 100, roughly 148 beds per floor. So at the end of the day, we'd be just under 600 beds with the entire building built, and you can see what that cost would look like down here. This is a complete jail, all alternates included, right here. So, sort of some cost-per-bed comparisons here. So again, if you look at this option here, I took the design and A and E fees out because we're just talking constructability. We're looking at $414,000 per bed. Option B, which is two built-out floors, one mezzanine level, 294,000 per bed. Option C, where we're shelling in third and fourth floor, so you can see same amount of beds between these two options, but we're shelling in for future growth, $349,000 per bed. Now, option C, just with alternates three and four, so again, just to remind you, alternates three and four, just these two, so we're just talking about bed space, $239,000 per bed, gets us 592 beds. Some project comparisons, you know, this is stuff that I just pulled off of some articles and some other things, so these numbers are probably going to vary a little bit. But if we have the South Dakota Women's Prison, it's at 60 million right now, I believe, budgeted. They're at 288 beds, and this is happening in Rapid City over, kind of by Rushmore Crossing area. They're at 208,000 per bed. But again, remember, there's almost zero site constraints in that area where we're working in between three large structures and a, and a downtown road. This is pretty much out in the open. The Men's State Penitentiary, again, just items I pulled, I do have sources on these if I need to show them. They have $567 million budgeted for 1,500 beds. They're at $378,000 per bed. Obviously, this is probably more heavy security and things like that, but also, these costs are projected to be a lot higher than that.
Mr. Chair. So on the women's prison, I'm also assuming that they're mechanical or whatever, doesn't have to be in a mezzanine like ours. It could probably be more on the same level as the main floor.
I'm not sure. Do not have the answers for that.
I'm sure that's adding to the costs, that we don't have the room to actually have a power plant or whatever.
Sure. And, and I guess I probably should have mentioned, too, when we're talking about that mezzanine level, what we would be doing is building the mezzanine level, the capacity for the energy plant, to achieve all four floors. Because if we don't, our MEP costs are going to skyrocket to be able to, like, if we're talking about doing it later, if we just want to add, you know, just, just for layman's terms, one HVAC unit, one chiller, a little bit of ice storage, and then we have to come back and add more to that system, you're talking those costs going up significantly. So when we, when we do the mezzanine level in any option, we're building it to maintain the capacity of the entire building. Just wanted to go over alternates one more time. I threw this in here just kind of for the public and other things, so they understand what's going on. Obviously, like I have said over and over, alternates one and two will be essential for operations regardless of what option we choose, because the Sally Port will not work with the lower-level booking center. And then alternate three and four, each alternate provides 100, roughly 148 beds if we duplicate each floor plan all the way up. So. Little bit of future cost comparisons here. So we have option A, which is a single housing floor and a mezzanine level with alternates one and two built in. I wanted to put these in every option, so you understand that most likely we need to add these in if we're going to do this. The current base cost right now is 85 million. In 2030, it's 101, so it goes up 16 million. 2035, 116 million. And then obviously, you can kind of go down. I don't need to spend too much time on here. If we were to build the entire jail with all alternates, here's our total cost. We're pushing 200 million five years from now, 230 million 10 years from now. So, and these are based off 4% increase for 2026 and 3.5% increase for all years after. But obviously, we know with things like COVID and other things, this can vary dramatically. Just wanted to put this in a graph to kind of show people what we're looking at, based on what option we choose. If this helps get more of a visual, all of these numbers are in millions here. So again, obviously, it's not savings, but it's just increases in cost if we don't do something now. So here's what we have for available bond money. This is just, this is close to our all-in right now. It's 37 million. So option A, as I showed back in the previous slide, is 85 million. Our difference is roughly 50 million. So again, these are, these are numbers, depending on a lot of factors, what we could possibly bond for, but there obviously needs to be a lot more discussions on this. Option B, 75 million short. Option C, 92 and a half, an option. C with all alternates, I didn't just do alternates one and two, so some of these prices or these costs can vary. But again, just wanted to throw that in there, so the public, public and, and you guys, the commissioners, understand where we're at.
Yeah, just real quick, we're going to have Andy Skoll from Skoll Construction come up and just talk with you in just a minute. But the next steps, we're going to request, like we said at the beginning of the presentation, if we want to do this at a future commission meeting or set up a special meeting, so we can drill down in further on the options, you guys can have a chance to look this over. We could have some meetings and give you more detail on the options. We can do that. And then also, we can bring in Tom Grimmon to talk through potential financing options at that point. So either way, and then a couple of things that I, I do think, and Commissioner Hadcock brought this up earlier, that we do have some options to, to create some partnerships. We have some good partnerships. I think, in my mind, if you could select maybe two commissioners to work with Davis and I to set up a meeting with the city, and then set up a meeting with Fall River County and Custer County. We currently provide housing for them. I know Fall River County specifically is looking at, trying to figure out what they're going to do for future jail needs, but I think there might be a potential to, to partner in cost share in some of this project with those entities.
So Chair. So my question would be, is the architect, mechanical, structural, civil engineer, design, commissioning agent, are they all included in on these costs?
Yes.
Okay. Number two is, we already know with buildings, it's just not building and building buildings. It's FTEs to house those buildings and take care of those buildings. It's also the utilities and everything else. Those costs should be included in those totals for the public. Does that make sense? I mean, you're not going to be able to get exact, and nobody can, but all those costs should be put in it, because we're finding out from other buildings that we built before. Those costs are, are not 7 million. We added 2 million for the concours, different areas, and we haven't paid the utilities or added the FTEs to it. So I'm not against the jail. You knew that from the beginning. I just like knowing all the costs. This is a great presentation and a good start, and I also believe that the more public meetings you have on it, you're going to have people disagree, but you also have them in the know about what's happening and why you're doing it. So I believe you're right, Brian, and you've always done it the right way, when you've done anything, by bringing the information meetings. Same with you, Mr. Purcell. You're new, so you're figuring some of this out. I get it. This is a perfect example of how to move it forward. And then, again, public meetings are huge. In order to make this, they're the ones paying for it. We're just making the decision in the long run, but they're going to be paying for this cost, and they want that protection. They want that infrastructure and that jail done right. Those things need to be taken seriously from the public when we ask for that kind of money. I think moving forward, you've got a great start here, but I encourage as many public meetings and, and Brian, getting out there to different areas in the community and tell them why you need this jail. Because if we do bonding or we do anything, and you're good at communicating that, I've seen it over and over again, they like you speaking and they like your upfront attitude when you do stuff, that's going to be huge for this having a smooth transition into what we need for the future. I think that's what we missed on some of the buildings before, but on this, I think with the direction of you two, it'll keep moving forward. And like I said, Mr. Purcell, you weren't, you got put in a situation, and you made the best of it, and I appreciate that, everything you've done. But this is, and I'm sure Brian will show you how we go through this process and make it more transparent and more public. And the more you do that, sir, it, it doesn't really simplify it, because they're still going to beat you up, but the bottom line is, is that you did your best to try to get that information out and tell people the facts and the truth and why we need to move forward on the jail.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Raskin.
I think one of the things that we're trying to avoid, you know, speaking of taxpayer dollars, is to build a new building and 10 years later, tear a roof off. And you tear that roof off, then you're going backwards before you can even go forwards. And I think that's one of the things that we're trying to avoid, is build something that will be there for our needs 15 to 20 years out without. that will be there for our needs 15 to 20 years out without having to tear a roof off a building that's going to probably be only 10 years old.
Brian, did you want Skoll to speak before we try to set up another date?
That'd be great. Good morning, Commissioners, my name's Andy Skoll, President of Skoll Construction. I don't have a lot to say, I'm here to answer questions. I do have two remarks from some of the questions that were asked, that I just want to make sure is clear. Commissioner Ross, connect, you had asked about square footage. In Option A, it's actually 55,000 square feet. What's included there is also a mechanical mezzanine level. So the jail sale floors are about 23,000 square foot, but there's about that much again for mechanical infrastructure for the full tower. So the square footage cost, the total number of square foot is closer to 55,000.
Okay.
The other one is in direct relation to the correlation to the women's prison currently under construction. We're in a partnership with another firm on that, the guaranteed maximum price is actually 72.8 million, and that brings it to about 257,000 per bed, okay? One of the things that, when we look at cost per square foot, we're over 1,000 dollars a square foot for this facility, and I think what's important in my world, which is non-emotional, we're just reacting to the information provided by the design team, is that if you wanted to compare that to the women's prison, there you have a facility that has 280 beds, but also includes administration space and then programming services. So its cost per square foot is about 750, but when we purely look at the detention portion of it, we provide about a year and a half of inflation, it's closer to 1,000 dollars a square foot. So they're quite comparable. I think what's really unique about this project, as you saw, the price per bed is extremely high to the market, you know, especially when you're looking at what I call Phase One, or you're looking at one floor. Davis and Sheriff Mueller mentioned these things earlier, but there's a significant amount of infrastructure due to the lack of space. So things that are, costs that are expended in Option A would not be repeated as you go forward, so 100% of the existing demolition cost, utility, utility relocates the earthwork, and due to the soils in the area, this requires defoundations. And so those numbers are all being spent on the front end and the Sally Port, those types of items, that otherwise are getting distributed over a larger scale project as you go higher up. Some of the minor changes, in fact, 90% of the mechanical system for the four-story facility is expended in the cost of the one-story facility. So that's where you're seeing a lot of that differentiation, and you're getting a lot more value based upon scale, is simply due to the location, being existing non-green space, inability to grow those spaces in the future, you're expending a lot of upfront costs and building that long-term infrastructure. With that, any questions that you may have, I'm here to answer them.
One of the things that we haven't mentioned, is the women's prison, you're building a prison, standalone prison, our jail, you're working with an operating jail, and you have to work around time schedules and security, so that makes it a lot more complex, and I'm sure that's
Absolutely.
an added cost.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the presentation. I think it's absolutely essential we have a special meeting to get more public input, and plus also bringing the specialist on where the bonding would be, or where the commission would like to go, with which direction, with the four options, the options that you presented here today. So, and I also, I would recommend myself and Mr. Drews to meet with these other counties to have those discussions with you, Brian. So we could set that up, but I think we need to set a date for a special meeting, so I don't, how soon could you do one, Brian?
Yeah, within the next week or two, we'd need to coordinate with Tom with his schedule, would probably be the biggest piece of it.
I would recommend probably giving him some time, because he doesn't have dates yet, but I'd look at the commission for their calendars, if anybody's gone, or.
Chair.
What timeframe are we looking at?
Ms. Haggard.
Being disrespectful, I think you ought to let one of the, I would like to be involved in that, instead of having to ask the questions on the backside, and I also work with the JSE on some of the counties that Brian goes to, so having the same two people, or the same three people on these committees all the time, and not having other people being involved with this, this is why I think we get disinformationed, or we have issues where the communication on this board needs to be a little bit different. So I would recommend not the same three people on the committees for this jail as we've had before. I think some of us would like the opportunity to be involved a little bit more as well, because other people are on building committees and stuff already, and they can get that information, and it makes it easy, and I'd like to be involved with it, because I've been around speaking for this jail and working with Kevin Tome, and actually Holloway on this jail for a long time, on infrastructure and other things, and Mike, so I would like to be involved in it, instead of the same people. And without being disrespectful, Lloyd, you won't be here next year.
Well.
So I would like to have people
I don't see why we can't have three.
So I would like that opportunity.
And we, I couldn't disagree on the same set of committees or task force, because I did put you and Ron on the one with, working with the elections and appraisals, so.
Yeah, one.
Let's look at our dates, when you're available.
Would you like us to coordinate with Holly on the date? We can get some dates that Tom's available, and that Davis and I are available, and that Andy's available, and we can give those to Holly, and she can coordinate with all of you to make sure that you're available.
Is the commission okay with that?
Good.
Yeah, please do that. Is there anything else?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks.
Let's do, next we have item number nine, items from Auditor.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. We have a transfer of an alcohol beverage license this morning from St. Pat LLC, under Estes Law Firm, to the New Underwood Roping Club, Inc. I know that on here, it says the recommendation is to deny, there are other options that I want to let the board know about, other than just denying. I don't know if anyone is here to speak in regards to this from the Roping Club. They might have a little bit more input about what their plans are, as far as coming up with a structure, but there is an option to, the last time this actually happened, we continued the hearing for about six months, so that's an option. There's also something in our ordinance where you can do a conditional approval, and then they have a year to come back. We would just go ahead and send the license in, and the county would hold the license until the structure is complete, and they could also apply for a six-month extension on that, if through no fault of their own, they aren't completed with the building, so if they could give us an idea of which direction they're going, that would help.
Mr. Chair.
Sir, could you just identify yourself for the record?
Yep, Dane Boom is my board member of the New Underwood Roping Club.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question. What are the confines that you're seeing right now, Cindy, that you're saying, you know, I know you said, in the recommendations deny, but you said there's some options. What is the main contention piece of that?
Our ordinance requires that they have a sufficient structure.
Okay. I just want to understand what we're looking at specifically.
That was according to planning's observation on that, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
I know you're going to hate me for this, but what's sufficient?
You asked P&amp;Z to explain that one to you.
Okay.
You have the floor, sir.
All right, so New Underwood Roping Club, 100% of our mission is to support the youth rodeo programs. Intermixed with that is we do some adult rodeos and different events that are all fundraisers that go 100% back into the facility. Mr. Estes offered us the opportunity to acquire this license, we submitted the application, not knowing that the piece of property we have wasn't properly zoned, etc. Planning and zoning called last week, said, hey, we need to do a conditional use permit, hey, you need a building permit, so we'll probably walk upstairs actually and talk with planning and zoning to get those balls rolling, we're going to put up a 200 to 400 square foot facility, which will happen fairly quickly, and so I think the option that she suggested that would be conditionally approved, and give us a year, would be way more time than we need to make these things happen. So I appreciate your support in not denying, and just work with us a little bit, as we work through this, planning and zoning just called last week, like I said, we called yesterday, of course, the offices were closed, but we're moving forward with that.
That'd be my motion, is to give them a year to make sure they comply with P&amp;Z and Auditor rules and regulations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
So Mr. Chair.
With the conditions, Mr. Lester.
I was going to ask, my question really is down to, it's, we're basically approving the transfer, and it's going to be held until he can show, you know, P&amp;Z and you, that he has a facility capable of whatever's required for the alcohol sales.
That's correct.
That's how I understand it, that's what I'm good with.
Mr. Chair, Cindy, would this be the conditional approval, then?
That is what I'm.
And then that's based on 12 months?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
That way we can move forward.
Any further questions? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, we have items from the Treasurer, and I'll recognize Annette Brandt.
Good morning, Commissioners. Annette Brandt, Pennington County Treasurer. Before you is a memo that was drafted after Jay Alderman and myself visited about the resolution last year that we requested to be rescinded. He and I will continue to be on that tax task force with the state to continue to work on those laws. However, seeing no immediate concerns or specific reasons why Pennington County should not proceed to sell the tax certificates at this time, we're in support of your approval for a resolution for the Treasurer to commence the sale of those certificates. We want to do our best to collect those taxes for the entities that their budgets rely on, so if you have any questions.
Is there any questions for Annette?
Sure.
Mr. Drews.
So, Annette, is there any belief that further legislation is going to need to be adopted in regard to this?
Yes, there's several laws that do need to be cleared up, but as far as the first portion of selling the tax certificates, for those people that are interested in that, what that does if they purchase the tax certificate, the interest rate that the county would normally collect and distribute out to the entities on delinquent taxes, then becomes the person who owned that tax certificate, only at the time if those certificates are not redeemed and tax deed action is taken, that, those are the laws now that they're looking at. So last year, just to give you an idea, we had, let's see here, we did not hold the sale, as you recall. We had 694 outstanding certificates then that we added to what the county held because of that sale. It was about 1.8 million for uncollected then at that time. We've collected quite a few of those now, there's only about 300 of those left that the Treasurer's office has. Total for the sales that are held in the name of the county is 425, and it amounts to about 766,000, but we're coming up on the tax sale for the 2024, or excuse me, 2023, April 2024, and that's the reason we wanted to come to you today, so that we could have that sale.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions for Annette?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
Move to approve the resolution authorizing the Pennington County Treasurer to commence selling tax certificates.
Set. Moved by Lester, seconded by Drews, Cindy for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, that brings us up to items from Buildings and Grounds, and I'll recognize again Director Davis Purcell.
Good morning, Commissioners, Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds. I apologize in advance, I did not have a lot of time to really wrap my head around this, due to the jail tower project, but what we're looking at here is, we want to submit an application for a grant, it's the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. Essentially, what they do is they assist local governments in implementing strategies to reduce energy, improve energy efficiency, things like that. Last week, Dave Ecclestone, my Assistant Director, reached out to a couple places in town, and they, we kind of decided we wanted to go the energy audit route, to look at some of our existing sort of energy plant infrastructure, and see if there's ways, once we replace, say, a large chiller or a boiler, things like that, to a more energy efficient model. So essentially, what the energy audit would do is they'll identify any potential energy-saving opportunities, they'll also provide technical and financial information, so upfront costs, ongoing costs, projected energy savings, and obviously, the return on investment, because when you're talking about energy efficiency, especially with mechanical equipment, it can be very spendy upfront, and maybe not much cost savings in the end, but we're going to go ahead and move forward with this, and the reason I'm bringing it to you now is we have an October 31 deadline to submit the application, so.
Is there any questions for Mr. Davis?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I've moved to approve the submission of the Department of Energy, Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant for 76,130 related to energy efficiency enhancements, and an energy audit through an equipment rebate voucher.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you, Davis. Next, we have items from the Highway Department, I'll recognize Joe Miller, Superintendent.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Up in front of you is a bid for a crane in our welding bay. We received authorization to bid this crane on September 3 of this year. Just a little bit of a recap, all of our mechanics right now, we do all of our fabrication in our big shop bay where the crane is, because there's a lot of heavy steel that needs to be lifted in place, when we do our fabrication of our trucks. So what this crane will allow us to do is move that stuff over to the welding bay where all of our exhaust fans and all the proper equipment are to do the welding and fabrication. We've received one bid, we've reviewed it and believe it to be accurate, it actually came in about 50% of what we had budgeted, so that's good news for us, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions for Mr. Miller? Hearing none, go back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I've moved to award overhead crane project to RCS Construction, Inc., Rapid City, South Dakota, the amount of 168,000.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we come up to items from the Building Director, and we have Davis Purcell again, pejorously.
He's there.
David, we have you on here for recommendations, retail sales agreement with audiovisual technology for 900 concourse.
Oh geez, for that. Again, Director of Buildings and Grounds, Davis Purcell. We're going to show you a presentation from AVI, with sort of a reduced cost across the board for all the AVI equipment out at concourse. Holly is kind of our general expert on this, so I'll probably let her speak on it, but I will be here for any questions.
Yeah, Commissioners, this is just a recommendation from the Building Committee to approve the AVI retail sales agreement that you have attached in your packets for the technology that will be installed out at the concourse facility. This presentation just shows you the rooms that have been selected. This presentation just shows you the rooms that have been selected to place technology in out in concourse. Mainly, the main conference room that is off the main entrance, the two waiting areas where the public overflow will be for commission meetings, planning commission meetings, the commission chambers themselves, and then the AV room. We've been in contact or discussions with our local IT department, our in-house IT, and they are going to be supporting some of the rooms out there, and we'll go over that as well. But the first room, just to give you a brief overview, is that conference room, which is right outside or off the main entrance. This is the room that we envision the staff members being able to wade in and work in while commission meetings are in session. It's the shortest, quickest access to the chambers. It will have the teleconference capabilities. We envision using it for department head meetings, committee meetings. This room is existing out in concourse and does not have any technology installed. So this would be a completely new install as part of the AVI project. The next slide just shows you the two public waiting areas that are being designed that are located right outside the commission chambers. We did a little bit of a separation to allow for storage, a storage room in the middle where we would put our chairs and things in when they weren't needed. But you can see the the two separate areas. They would just have fifty-five inch TV on each side, have the meeting streamed out so that they can have their visits and their discussions and not interrupt the meeting while it's going on.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So Holly, these are not enclosed rooms?
These are not enclosed rooms, correct, sir.
Yep.
The next room is the commission chambers itself. We designed the technology with the same that you have currently in this room, mainly to be consistent, keep costs down as much as we can. The new features that I did want to point out for the board is that I've asked for an upgraded timing system to allow for more transparency for the public, that they can actually see their countdown, that they have three minutes and as it works its way down. And then individual monitors at the dais for the board members. A total of those seven screens would be the nine hundred and twenty-four dollars so that the commissioners would be looking at the presentations in front of them instead of up on the walls as you are now. Another feature that we have added would be a dual split podium. We'd have one side for where the citizens and the public speakers can go, an ADA accessible space in the center, and then another side where we would have the hookups for staff to be able to do their presentations from. The room is quite large, so we do need to have two additional TV monitors in the back of the room for people to be able to see the presentations clearly that will be mounted. I believe they're wall mounted at this point. Again, just to break down to show you the different presentation abilities within the room. Two projector screens will be wall mounted up front. One would show the presentation and one, the other would show if a board member or an applicant is participating electronically via Zoom or Teams or something like that. Individual monitors in front of the commissioners would show the presentations. And the other wall mounted and ceiling mounted TVs would show the presentations for the public members. This is just for visual purposes to show the individual screens and how the dais is being designed for the board members. And then the actual updated timing system so you can see the countdown and have the speaker know where they're at. We do have currently the smart annotation podium technology. We need to retrain and start using that more, like when a commissioner asks about a section line or this area or access. We want to get better at making sure that those are being notated and properly recorded on our videos. So that will remain in there as the current technology that we have. So then the AV room, basically the the heart, the control room for the entire video system. That's where all of the equipment is housed to be able to process the meeting videos, do our live streams, control the sounds, monitors, projectors, things like that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskine.
Holly, is there any equipment in the existing AV room that we can use when we move over to concourse?
My understanding of what's going to happen is this room will turn into a training area for the sheriff's office. And so in order to save and be more efficient, the existing system will stay intact here. And then we will get a new updated system so that it all works seamlessly out at concourse. My understanding, the only system that we might take from in here is our hearing assist that we wouldn't need to reduplicate. So we're going to have a meeting with the sheriff's office and see if there's some other pieces of the equipment that they don't envision having a need for, like our wireless microphones, our lapel mics, things like that. But not in the AV room. It needs to be updated. Our system is over ten years old. And when it comes to technology, that's pretty ancient.
Chair.
Ms. Haggard.
So initial for audio video was thirty-six thousand four sixty-six?
No, that number is the design contract we signed with AVI to put together the systems out at concourse. That is the design contract, not a number for any equipment whatsoever.
So Mr. Davis, you got furniture, fixtures, and equipment. You have two million. You just spent, am I correct?
So that's a number, that's a number that I threw in there, okay? It's not, I didn't want this sheet to be, I didn't want there to be a zero there. As you've seen on Kevin's sort of sheet that he has presented multiple times, what we're trying to do is break it down per project. So this sheet you will see more often for concourse. But again, the reason I threw that number in there is we obviously have the contract with AVI Systems Furniture. That is a budgeted number. We've already, you can see what we've spent to date on that, just tearing down cubicles and storing them. We also have office furniture that needs to get purchased. System, excuse me, moving expenses, computer network, phone system, cameras, and signage. So is all that going to be added on to the concourse project at some point? Yes, but I do not have those costs upfront. I just wanted to throw a budgetary number in there.
And those costs, that six million eight forty-seven is what you have left out of doing some of the basics like the architectural and stuff like that, right?
Correct.
Okay, without the phone system, I thought was getting paid through the six hundred thousand through the IT. Or do we need more than that?
I'm not one hundred percent sure on that, if that's coming from IT's budget or if that is coming out of the concourse budget.
Well, we did it through IT because they said they needed it, and I'm pretty sure they added it into our budget. So we can, we can verify that. So that either save you costs or add you costs on there. Yeah.
And again, I think this is more of a breakdown of what you were looking for as far as project costs. So this, I threw this together very quickly. It's fairly accurate. I mean, I would say ninety-five percent accurate. We just, the reason I didn't want to just throw was zero on sort of the FFNE stuff is because there are going to be significant costs there over time. But we're going to have to bring all those to the board to approve at a later date, so.
And the two hundred and ninety-six thousand, I don't know what it, what a good number is for that. I'll just say it up straight. And I don't know if any of those areas are have-tos for this at this point. So for me to make a decision on that, I'm going to have to trust that two hundred and ninety-six thousand was what it costs unless somebody could tell me different, that you can downsize or not have to have all that stuff and you can add to it. Because three hundred thousand dollars and then leaving the, a lot of the stuff here that we've already spent the money on and not being able to move it over there at this point, that's a lot of cash flow for AV equipment.
It is, and you know, I can't speak very eloquently on it, but I can tell you that AV equipment is very expensive. And to do live streaming capabilities and other things like that, especially in the chambers and in the waiting's area, waiting area, that's a significant cost. We did, I believe this was.
Three ninety-six.
Three ninety-six at the last one. So we did reduce it by a hundred thousand dollars. And even with that, our last, one of the last slides we wanted to show is this is sort of a multi-purpose room that essentially took off a hundred thousand dollars from the project from AVI. And our tech, our IT department can kind of put in the basic necessities for that to be able to have conference, you know, meetings and phone calls and things like that. But we don't need the live streaming capabilities in in this room at it concourse. Right now, this was actually going to be set up similar to the EOC room, which we just don't need that capability right now out there. But again, if we keep picking things off of this, the costs later will be significant when the building is complete. And then we're looking back and looking at a room saying, oh, shoot, we should have done something there. Those costs will be substantial to come back and do it again. And I don't, I don't know about the equipment here. I can't really speak on it and how much the sheriff will actually utilize it or the sheriff's department. But I, even if we were to pick and choose some items from, say, the AV room here, they may need to be replaced at one end or another. So I just don't know, I don't know how compatible that would be at the end of the day if we were trying to take equipment from here and using it over there.
Well, the bottom line is not picking it apart and making it cheaper to a, to extent where in the long run, you're spending more money. We talked about that on the jail earlier. But we also want to make sure that it's not commission, I'm going to be up straight, commission spending for stuff that in other areas that we need it more than to upgrade all our stuff. Does that make sense? That's being straight up because if it's going to be multi-use and we're going to use it for the whole departments and all that stuff, it's different because, long story short, if we're getting things just to upgrade us because it's better, or not better, but you know, I don't know what the word is, more nicer, I'm willing to hold off on that. That's, I guess, where my point was. If we don't have to have it, but we need it, there's a difference.
Mr. Chair.
Are you done, Deb?
Yeah, and then just the totals, just making sure we're staying within the budget with those numbers as well. So three hundred thousand is a lot off a budget of seven million, I guess, is the, what we're going to spend. Did we, do we have kind of a base estimate on everything that we're going to spend, Mr. Davis? I mean, you have the breakdown. Give me this.
Yeah, I believe, and I did not include the budget, the, or excuse me, the other Excel spreadsheet that we've been keeping for concourse because we're trying to move to this look. I believe those, that budgetary breakdown had estimated costs associated with concourse that are on top of the construction itself. So when we're just looking at construction, that's where you get the six point seven million. And that included all of the alternates and the base cost to do the remodel. And then you're obviously going to have your design and A and E fees on top of that. So we're a little over seven million. But I, I do know, I believe that Kevin had provided budgetary cost estimates on that last breakdown that showed that we're going to have significant costs in FFNE and things like that. What those costs are, I don't know yet. We don't have them finalized. We're so early in the process. I mean, I could try to come back. What I'll try to do is come back at the next meeting and show some of those estimated costs, and I'll provide that other budgetary breakdown for you as well.
Well, like I was saying, and this is good, Mr. Davis. So I have a, I have an amount that I have to spend on FFNE and fixtures and design and everything. And so what I do is once I paid a bill or once I've, I've did a guesstimate, paid the bill, I put the number there. And then when you, when you're done paying those bills, it keeps breaking it down into one million dollars left. Does that make sense? So when we're seeing a project happen, same with you, you want to see that because you want to make sure your numbers are going right. Your guesstimets are either coming in lower or higher. Good for you. A lot of times, they ended up a lot lower. I'll just tell you straight up when we did a lot of the projects before. And then your bottom line, you take away from that money so people can see, including yourself in this commission, that when we're spending the seven million, that everything we decide is being, you already decided that, you decided that, you decided that, and this is what we have left. And yes, we do have three hundred thousand, and yes, we took off a hundred thousand. Does that make sense?
Yes, and if you do look in that spreadsheet, we do have the spent to date column that shows what we've spent to date and also the remaining balance. But again, this is a working document. I did not get this completely edited before we presented it today. And I plugged that two million dollars in FFNE to just throw it out there. I, I'm hoping we come in under that, but I also understand some of the costs to these are going to be fairly significant.
And I'll probably come meet with you, and I was going to, but I forgot it was vacation on Monday.
Sure.
So just to plug some of those numbers in, and that way too, I have an understanding. I don't know if we could show the other commissioners at that point too. I have an understanding of basically what it might cost. And like I said, a lot of times, you'd be surprised to show the public that we've saved money on stuff as well. And that's, that's good to do as well, meaning, and you just said it, a hundred thousand dollars could have cost us four, but it, you know, we didn't do that because it wasn't a have-to. So it's, it's just a good thing for the public. It's good for us to make decisions on, on, on everything. And thank you for, for breaking this down even more.
And I'll remind you, this will be on our agenda in the next meeting. No action on this today so we can gather more information. Mr. Lester.
No, I'm good.
Is there any further questions or discussion? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next, we come up to item number fourteen. This is items from the compensation committee. I'll recognize HR Director Carol Bancroft.
Morning, Commission. Sandy Sortland, Senior HR Manager for Pennington County. The first recommendation that we have for you from the compensation committee is an update to personal leave policy four dot three B. This is basically just updating it. It's been kind of out of date for a while. So we worked through it and added a few things to it, took out the word emergency. And as you can see, exhibit A is the redline version. And then exhibit B is the proposed clean version. But I did notice that the significant other statement is missing from the clean version. So that would get updated before it would get put into the employee handbook. At this point, this is just a recommendation for you to be able to go through the policy. And then at the next meeting, we will approve it to go in the handbook.
Okay. Is there any questions?
Here.
Ms. Haggard.
Just comments. Number one, I don't think you broke down significant other. For me, I haven't seen it. I looked at state and federal law, and I haven't seen it. I asked other people in a couple of different states, family members and friends, and also talked to a couple of people about liability on significant other or power of attorney. Because also, power of attorney also has four different areas of durable, power of attorney, medical, power of attorney, disability. And some of those are more responsibilities than others for time off and stuff. So you're having our staff, and this is from some of the department head, two of them, that said, so which one are we speaking of at the time? And, and we're going to make that decision based on because they've signed a piece of paper and they have to tell us what, four of those? I mean, you're really getting down in the weeds on people's missing time. I mean, you have bereavement as state and federal law, but then you, you're adding exceptions like significant other. And you can't ask them, have you been together two weeks or seven years? You can't tell them that. So we decided to live together after a month, so we're significant others now. I just had people saying this stuff to me, and even department heads saying, we're really starting to make exceptions out of state law that might cause us more liabilities. Trying to figure out, trying to do the right thing by an employee, and then you can't ask certain questions. FLMA, I read a bunch of stuff on that. It said it didn't recommend putting power of attorney in it on a HR website that I was looking at because of the significance of what that means. You can't really break it down. So I'll just say, I, I wasn't in agreement really with the significant other unless they're by state law. Like some states have it, you know, after seven year, your common law, then I get it. But you're opening us up, I believe, or to our department heads, to liabilities where if they don't give it to them, is that going to be something because we have it in the policy or the handbook? I get that. I think exceptions sometimes cause more issues than actually help. They end up causing more issues in the long run. That's my opinion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lester.
I have a question. Why do we remove emerg-
Why do we remove emergency from this? Because typically that's a classification.
We removed emergency because it's not always an emergency situation that someone needs to take this personal leave. Um, sometimes it's an extended, like this person is going through an extended illness, their family member or significant other is going through an extended illness. That's no longer an emergency. Emergency is more, it just happened. So we're looking more at, we're trying to ensure that we're helping our employees if they're dealing with an extended issue. And that's why we removed the word emergency from it.
Gotcha.
And this is, we'll be coming back again next, next meeting.
Yes.
Chair.
Ms. Hancock.
I think you're contradicting and you should look at your policy. You're contradicting in some areas about marriage and Commonwealth, their joint responsibility and different stuff when you're doing things on this policy. So, um, bereavement is different. Um, you say it different, you don't put significant other on there and some other stuff. So if you're going to do a policy, um, you have to, um, follow it through, through, um, all the policy. Bereavement, then you use the state law for immediate family, spouse, son, stepdaughter, step, whatever sibling. I think then you're going to run into significant other saying, you know, why didn't you put me in there?
I would have to look at, I would have to look at the bereavement leave policy again.
So bereavement leave will be granted and it changes it to no.
Well, bereavement leave have its own policy.
Actually, you did at the one part and then the next one puts coverage in cases involving the members of county immediate family. So you have two different things on there. I don't know. I think you're opening up to, again, because I would look at significant other, I would look at other states or, or the government. We are government, guys. We should follow state and federal law and the exceptions for that, um, I'll keep saying, I tried to find it in everything I did, uh, for significant other and asked, actually a couple of companies down, they don't put it because of liability. So just my thought.
Well, this is the first area and we do have, uh, compensation committee meeting next week if I believe correct, so we can bring that discussion to that and get some clarification. But this was, uh, great discussion at the compensation committee meeting and was their So any further questions? We'll go to item B.
Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. Good morning, Commissioners. I think it's still morning. So the compensation committee has met and discussed a recommendation for a change to the bylaws that, uh, this is something that over the course of the last couple of years since the committee was reestablished, that there was discussion about some of the smaller entities as far as our departments were not represented on the current composition. So that is the recommendation is that we are more inclusive. And so the compensation, uh, committee would recommend that the composition would be nine voting members. And I highlighted for you as far as what the change would be is in blue, that the, the human resources director, the human services director, and one department head selected by the other seated members through application process would be voting members. And then, uh, the other change is that due to the fact that the county commissioner who sits on that, uh, committee, that they do vote on any recommendations from the committee here in the meetings. And so removing them as a voting member and being an assisting member instead. And then there were a couple of other changes that are recommended, that, uh, it's in the term of office in the bylaws, and this was working very closely with legal counsel, that Jay helped us understand some of the things that would help to better define the bylaws, that we cleaned up the language in the second paragraph under term of office. And then under voting, that we did add as far as voting may be conducted via electronic mail, et cetera. And so that's giving that opportunity that as long as everyone who is notified that they do have the capability for electronic access and that a, a vote would be by roll call. So that is something new to the bylaws. And then also there was no, uh, definition of how the records from the committee would be kept. So it clarifies that the secretary will maintain a record of all minutes in the bylaws. So these are recommendations and hence that they won't be acted on today, that I'll bring them forward again in the next meeting for a motion.
Thanks, Carol. Is there any questions for Carol?
Here.
Ms. Hancock.
Um, I like, um, committees to be recommending bodies for us to make that final decision, but I also think when you in charge of a committee that affects your department, that you being a position deemed as a facilitator, I don't think that's right. I think when, um, you have to take that personal responsibility for that committee, um, and also vote yes or no on what they're saying. I want to know if you're wanting what they're saying or they're not wanting, meaning, uh, you have a different point of view. I like that when John did that because he didn't agree on some of the stuff they did. Um, and then he also found that on some of those positions, um, there's a lot of people in there to try to disagree with. I'll tell you, it became political for him. I had conversations with them and that's why I ended up not liking, uh, compensation committees or some committees for that reason. Um, because it'd be like the sheriff having a, um, committee, but he'd be a facilitator of the committee of what the rules and regulations for be, should be in the, in his position or any other department. I don't think that's right. I think you are the one that should be saying, okay, I looked all this up. You guys, thank you for this conversation, but instead of saying, okay, the committee voted, we had six to whatever, I want to know that you're saying something and you're a voting member saying I agree or disagree because your voice does matter. For me, anyway, I'll be up straight. So, um, I, I've seen the compensation committee at this point, um, recommending body. It becomes, it, and it has been come, became political on some of the stuff that we had did. Uh, the wage study on some of that where some of the departments I know, um, didn't have a voice. They were told by, because there is a composition of that many in that committee, uh, it moved forward anyway. So, um, they believed more, and I was speaking for their voice in the publics, that they needed more public meetings and more information to be able to move that forward. So for me, um, I'll be up straight. I'm, I'm not, I, I, I thought I'd try the committee. I thought it'd be a good idea, but at this point, I think our HR director and you have four other people underneath you, that if these things that we need for, um, wage studies, um, anything on rules and regs that could be brought forward, it also can be sent to every department with their conversation and them come up and give their voice. I don't think it needs to be a certain people in here because I think it's caused more controversy for me on the backside of not being in the committees and only having four or five people in there out of seventeen departments. So, um, I'm going to say, I haven't heard a lot of positive of keep moving the committee forward. So that's my point.
My, my comment on that is, I guess I disagree after sitting through them and there's great feedback from all, there's even people coming in, sitting off to the side, giving feedback. And quite frankly, uh, everything's discussed and it is a recommending body. So HR doesn't agree with something, they're going to come up just like they're here today with a recommendation. They may disagree or whatnot. So I, I think, uh, this body has done some good work. They've talked through things. Yes, there's not, there's opportunity to have discussions. They may disagree outside those doors and, and have discussions otherwears, but, uh, they should bring them to that meeting. And, uh, I think the compensation's been tasked with some hard work and they've done it. And so, uh, they, they're the ones that come up with this, uh, recommendation that you see in front of you, uh, for the bylaws and, and pretty simple fact of not putting HR as the director of it, uh, overseeing it was the reason why they need to share and explain themselves as a recommending body. So those are my comments, but like I said, there, there's no action on this today. This is informational. Any further discussion? Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.
Next, we come up to items from the public. Speaker request form is required, uh, a time for our member of the public to discuss and express concerns to the Board of Commissioners on policies and issues affecting county government and its functions. Action will not be taken during this time on any issues brought forth that are not properly noticed. Speakers under this section will be recorded in the minutes by the name and area of interest. I do, do have one speaker request form and this is from Mr. Andrew Skoll.
Good morning again, Members of the Commission. Andrew Skoll, twenty-four thirty, Archer Wade, speaking at his, as a citizen. I, uh, a lot of times people come up complaining about potholes or different things. I'm coming up to draw it an attaboy. Um, I spend a significant amount of time, I ranch in a rural neighboring county, I've spent a lot of time on gravel roads in all of our neighboring counties. This fall, I spent a significant amount of time in eastern Pennington County. And the state of the roads that the Pennington County Highway Department is doing is fabulous. And I wanted to give a shout out to Joe and his team, just let them know how well they are doing in comparison to some of our neighbors. Now, our neighbors are doing just fine. I'm not here complaining about them at all, but I think it's important to tell people when they're doing a good job and the Pennington County Highway Department is doing so in those rural road sections. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Andrew. And they are sitting in the commission chambers, listening to what you just said. So that's, appreciate that. Uh, any further discussion? No more public comment. At this time, I'd look to take a ten minute recess for planning to set up. Moved by Drew, second by Lauster, all in favor and keep by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, look, promotion to come back into session.
So moved.
Next, second by Lauster, all in favor and keep by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we move up to planning commission agenda items. The commission still utilizes speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on any item, please, uh, please complete a speaker request form on the bookshelf in the back of the chambers or return it to Commission Manager Holly Hennies located at the lower right side of the dais. With that, I'll recognize Brittany Molitor.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor. Item sixteen is an encroachment agreement for Reynolds and Livingston LLC. Christine Livingston is the agent. Um, this was a condition of approval for an encroachment of a shop building in the section line right of way, uh, that was approved at the previous, uh, Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, this encroachment agreement was, um, prepared by our State's Attorney's Office, um, and approved. So staff is just looking for the chair's signature on the encroachment agreement.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rosskineck.
Brittany, when you get a minute, would you just verify that size? This plat says three point one seven and Rapid Map indicates, I think, three point four seven or something. So just trying to figure out if Rapid Map's correct.
Okay, um, actually that, um, plat hasn't been filed yet. That is the proposed plat. So in order for the plat to get filed, so that isn't necessarily correct because, on Rapid Map, because that doesn't, the plat isn't drawn in yet.
Okay.
Um, but this is part of the requirement for them to be able to file the plat. So they have to have the encroachment agreement filed with the registered deeds prior to filing the MYLAR.
Is part of that lot, uh, you could send up to Lawrence County or is it all in Pennington?
No, part of it is in Lawrence County. So they did already file the plat with Lawrence County.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further questions? Now I'd go to the commission for a recommendation.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rosskineck.
Move to approve the chair's signature on encroachment agreement satisfying the conditions of the approval for encroachment into a section line right of way, variance of VA twenty-four dash zero zero one one.
Been moved and seconded by Lauster. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, this brings us up to items from chair, commission members. This is a time for individual members to bring forth any ideas or concerns to the full board. Official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Uh, direction may be given to bring back items before board for future considerations. Is there anything anybody wants to discuss? Seeing none, I'd go to meeting and committee reports and I'd go to Mr. Lauster.
All right, well, building committee, unless Mr. Rosskineck has anything to add. I think we heard everything that was the topic of discussion in item thirteen and eight today. I don't think we can add on to any of that. That was all the briefing was.
I think that's all covered today.
Yep, that's all covered today. Weed and Pest Board meeting, I was there. Uh, the only major, it was a short meeting for that meeting and, uh, the only thing that they really were talking about, about the fuels, shade break, timber sales, they're going to be doing some timber cuts and they're going to be able to get some, uh, trees out of that that are going to get some dollars. So that's good for them on that one. EM Users Board, uh, ESCC nine-one-one Users Board, let's see here. The EMUB, they, uh, they're currently working on the pre-disaster, uh, plan. Um, the cur, uh, there's a comment period that has to go through, forward. Once that's done, then it goes to FEMA, uh, for final approval. There's some other nuances in that, they're changing some things, but needless to say, that's kind of where we're at with that one. They also met for Dustin's review. Uh, Cyber Infrastructure Security Agency also came out here and they've been doing, utilizing Pennington County and Rapid City as a test site for some of their community resilience assessment. And so we, we should get a report on that from Region Eight, um, hopefully in the near future. We'll see how that comes out. Of course, they're still doing CERT trainings. Um, and then they've also done the, um, emergency management exercises, the coordination of help between all the regional, the staff plan, and that's, seems to be doing well. Uh, underneath the, uh, nine-one-one Users Board, um, Kevin Carley will be coming to us about purchasing some radio equipment that needs to be purchased, but we've already heard about it. It's the expansion of their backup, um, nine-one-one call center. So I think that's, um, something we already knew about. And then the transcription software, they're kind of holding off on that purchase. They're going to look at whatever one meets their direct requirements and then they're going to make a determination. Apparently the, 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 the stuff is changing so rapidly, people keep coming at them with new stuff and they're just going to sit down and figure out what they want and say, can you provide this? And we're just going to get that. Um, outside of that, uh, they're doing comfortable on staffing and they're working, uh, with Lawrence County. There's a collaboration with them. They're bringing their PSAP here, uh, October twenty-first to the twenty-eighth, uh, as their equipment needs to be moved. So we're going to take on that, um, PSAP workload, they're going to move their stuff and then get them back into, uh, operational status on the twenty-eighth, so about seven days. Um, outside of that, I don't think there's anything else major from any of those. The, the only other piece of information that I would input on is, um, you may have seen the, um, news about the New Inwood Fire Department. I've been involved with that probably for three years. I've heard me kind of brief here and there about it. Uh, it obviously came to a head, um, but I think it was Tuesday, there was a resignation, Monday or night or Tuesday night, there was a resignation. Thursday, there was a recruiting effort and so fourteen members resigned on Tuesday, I believe, and then forty-three signed up to be back on or start their training with the fire department. So they had some people that had moved off of the fire department due to some leadership concerns. And then once the leadership resigned, then they had a significant more group show back up to be a part of that fire district, uh, fire department. Jerome's helped them get it up and running, uh, make sure that they're all meeting their criteria and things that nature. So there was, uh, just a, a lot of questions and stuff, but I think if we're moving forward, it's going to be good and that community still has a fire department to put out fire and move forward. That's about it.
Good. Thank, thank you, Travis. Mr. Drews.
Uh, I did attend the webinar on the West Dakota Regional Water System. Uh, it, it was truly a technical session and, uh, but that continues to grow. They keep adding, uh, some new members, uh, that expressed an interest in that. Uh, I also, uh, attended the Box Elder Event Expo, uh, that was held at the box. Uh, they had their, um, many of the businesses set up vendor booths to talk about, uh, and display their wheres and what they're doing in Box Elder and, and, uh, it was a good event overall. The, uh, also- Also, on our webinar for the South Dakota County Association, that featured Drew Peterson and Randy Dibert as chair, the two chairpeople of the Legislative Summer Study Committee on Property Tax Assessment Methodology. They just simply explained that they were having the next meeting, which was last week, last Wednesday, which I was unable to attend because of a conference I was at, and I haven't heard the final result of what that committee came down to. I think that was their final meeting, unless they established something further on it. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Mr. Drews. Mr. Rosskineck?
I think we already covered the, most of the stuff that we talked about, the building committee, so I'll, that's all I had.
Deb, did you have anything?
Yeah. So during the powwow, I attended and was invited to the Great Vines Chibol Chairman Committee meeting, and they talked where the Conservation District actually bought the Triple Seven Ranch, and they're looking at how the Native American groups, including the Seven Council fires, which is Mark Van Norman, can work out something where they can use that land in different ways for other things. They also were talking about just some of the stuff with the law enforcement and otherwise that they can try to help or make a difference with, or do something different with in our community across the Native American areas of the reservations to try to make a big difference on that. So I like going to the committees, I like listening to what they have to say based on the Native American issues. They also had a guy there that, he actually stayed in RV in the different reservations in order to figure out and see the disparities, and I like that, that actually people are getting smart enough to not just hear, but also see what's happening on the different reservations to try to make a difference. And the man was very interesting and met the, and I can't remember, I didn't write their names, I was introduced to the lady that is working with the Conservation District on that. And we also had a friend that came down, he comes down every year, but he actually could make it this year to come down to the powwow with his family. His family dances, his name is Charlie. Scott had met him when he was in the oil field back then, and what an amazing family, and that just tells you on the powwow, and if you go there, it's absolutely beautiful how many people and how much money the powwow brings in from all the different areas around not only the five-state region, but around the reservations and different areas around the state. So it's absolutely beautiful, the music is very calming for me, seems loud to most people sometimes, but I think it's pretty awesome. I can't say enough about it. It's just, it's kind of like the stock show for the ag community, the Native American community bring themselves together, and it also helped for Indigenous Day or Native American Day. It brought a lot of the Native Americans from different states and otherwise to see what we do for Native American people. It also, if you remember, I remember Tim Gallego and worked with many people, including the governor, to get Native American Day in South Dakota, because it was very important to him and our communities and our resident, our Native American people, that they got recognized. So it's come a long ways, and I'm very proud of a lot of people that stay involved with the powwow and just trying to make a difference through these communities and our Native American people. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll piggyback on that. Deb, I think they had record number of registered dancers this year, which goes to show you that it's growing, it's, and it's evolving into a big event for the community.
Huge.
And they still do the WASIP one-on-one, Amy, Amy put that on, and that's to teach what the dances are and what's going on. I think Mr. Drews went to one year, WASIP one-on-one, or somebody did, and so that's good, it's supposed to be involved for everybody. The WR Public Land Steering Committee was canceled due to Zeke being in another meeting at that time, so it was rescheduled. The compensation committee meeting, we addressed a couple of the things that were on here today that are on. There was great discussion during the compensation committee meeting on a variety of different, not only the makeup, but how it's run. Again, bystanders in the room are ten, twelve non-voting members, but they voiced their concerns as the discussions are having, are continuing on. So that's what I can report on that. I did attend the Vicarage Foundation meeting last, not meeting last night, but their guest speaker for AI. It was the thirty-first, I believe, speaker series that they have. They talked a great deal, he started Siri, and he talked about how the progress of technology from back in nineteen eighty-four, when he first started, to where it's at today, and where he thought, thinks it's going to go. And there was great questions from the, from the audience also towards the end. But I think AI, from the talks of it, is, it's here, we're using it now, and it's amazing. But he also stressed very much when you use AI, because a lot of people are using it for a lot of different things, that it's, it's a revolving technology, and it's not always a hundred percent accurate, depending on how you use it. It only knows what it's told, but there's some other great accomplishments that way. But he said in the future, people were worried about losing jobs because of AI, and he said, no, it pretty much, it always needs the human aspect of it, but people are going to be able to learn faster than previously. And that comment stuck in my mind as some of the young students from Central got up and asked them questions, and they already are using AI for several things. So it's going to be a fast-moving technology. With that, that's all I have to report. The next on our agenda is executive session for SDCL dash one twenty-five, or one dash twenty-five dash two Personnel Matters and Contractual Pending Litigation for one twenty-five two three Annual Department Head Reviews. Look for a motion to go into executive session underneath those items.
So.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Rosskineck, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Chairman, I have a conversation.
Oh.
On the issue.
Ms. Hagcock.
So on the executive sessions, I won't be back there for the new salary on our B&amp;G. Already made up my mind, I don't need a discussion, I've been watching and understand that situation. And the reclasses, I won't be back for that. I think they're reclasses and understand, yeah, their position. So I have no need to go in executive session, but for the litigation and the performance reviews, I think that's part of my job description, so I would do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, I'd look for a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Rosskineck, seconded by Laster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, I'd recognize Human Relation, Human Resource Manager, Carol Bancroft.
I could be Human Relations too. So Carol Bancroft, Human Relations Director. So the sheriff's office has three compensation exception requests, and so for the first one, for Anna Bingham, the motion could read, I move to approve Anna Bingham be moved to an A thirteen, step nine, seventeen dollars and fifty-three cents per hour, effective October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Moved by Laster, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 So the second one is for Bodwine. The motion could read, I move to approve Rodney Bodwine be moved to B twenty-two, step one, twenty dollars and nineteen cents per hour, effective October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
That'd be my motion.
Moved by Laster.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So the third one is Kwapi Julius Morris. That I move to approve Kwapi Julius Morris be moved to a B twenty-two, step three, twenty dollars and sixty-nine cents per hour, effective October thirteenth.
That'd be my motion.
Two thousand twenty-four.
Twenty-four, yes.
Moved by Laster.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
We got one more item.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rosskineck.
I move to approve Davis' per sale salary to four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and forty cents bi-weekly, effective September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
Moved by Rosskineck. Seconded by La Croix.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
I didn't go back to talk about the salary on Mr. Davis, because I believed taking Mr. Davis from the forty-six seventeen an hour to forty-nine eighty-five an hour was a change from watching his performance, all the job descriptions he's had to take over last year, doing an exceptional job, the communication he gives, the success he's had with his staff, changing the culture in which his job description at that point took a lot of time and effort, and you did it diligently, you also did it professionally, you were also, a lot of your staff have a lot of respect for that. To me, that means a lot for doing your job description. And again, it wasn't against anybody's job description, I just like to talk about it out front about that. And in this case, again, I'm for this change because of all the classes you've had to take, all the different things that had to move you up to make that next amount for your job description. So thank you, Mr. Davis, for what you do for us.
Thanks, Deb. Now, just for some clarification, Carol, do we need to add the step? It's a D, I believe it's a D sixty-one fourteen?
Happened in the past.
Okay. Okay. So we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Move to adjourn?
Moved by Laster, seconded by Rosskineck to adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.